...blood types that you especially would like to have people, and by the way, do people have to know what their blood type is before they come in to donate?
So, no, they don't need to know what their blood type is. As a matter of fact, when you donate, you will actually receive a card, a donor card, from the American Red Cross, and that will actually make your donation time a little smoother when you go in the second time around. So you don't need to know your blood type. As a matter of fact, that's a benefit of donating blood, is that you can actually learn about your blood type after a few weeks when the blood is actually tested. The blood types that we need, we basically need all blood types. There are some blood types that are in especially severe shortage, and that's the Os and the Bs, but all blood types are needed at this time. If you go across the board, we're basically short every single blood type. Consequently, there's an ongoing need for people to donate, especially now.
Certainly, we heard a lot about blood donation right after the September 11th attacks, of course, and you talk about bringing blood in from other parts of the country. But this brings up the issue of shelf life, how long blood can be stored before it must be used or must be discarded. What is it, 41 days, something like that?
Forty-two days, that's it. Blood only lasts 42 days. So people say, "Well, all those folks came out to donate during September 11th. Can't you just freeze the blood and it will last forever and ever?" Unfortunately, we can't. Blood is a product that's generated from a human being, and like many other products that you buy in the supermarket on the shelf, has an expiration date where it loses its potency, its ability to be effective in medical procedures. So consequently, with 42 days, blood is, that's all blood lasts. So consequently, we always have to collect blood. It never stops. We're basically a 24/7 operation.
Tell us a little bit more about the donation process itself. How long does it take? Does it hurt? How much blood do you actually take? Do you have to fast before you can donate blood? What's the story?
Please don't fast. It's very important that you don't fast. We need, basically, people need to be more than 17 years of age, weigh more than 110 pounds, and be in general good health. Most people can donate. Many people can donate. And so folks say, "Well, I have diabetes, I can't donate." That's false. "I have high blood pressure, I can't donate." That's false. "Well, I'm anemic." Well, it depends on your iron level on that particular day. So there's a lot of misconceptions about who can and who can't donate. Basically, the process is, you show up at a blood donation site, and we will actually, hopefully, ideally, you would make an appointment in advance, because if you make an appointment in advance, then we can actually have a smooth-running operation and it minimizes wait times. Basically, you make your appointment in advance, you show up at your appointment time, you read some reading materials. The reading materials talks about ways, reasons why the people can't donate, and I've already mentioned some of them. For example, if you traveled in a malarial zone, you can't donate for a year. If you've traveled in England, if you lived in England, rather, between 1980 and 1996 for more than three months, you can't donate. If you had hepatitis, you can't donate. So there's a couple of reasons why you can't donate. We give you the reading material to screen, to screen out folks who aren't eligible for those particular reasons. Again, many people are eligible to donate. As a matter of fact, most adults are eligible to donate. And then, you would actually go through a procedure where it's, we call it a health history booth, where we provide a mini-physical. We'll test your iron level, we'll test your blood pressure, we'll test your temperature, and then we'll ask you a series of questions to ensure that you're okay to donate on that particular day. After that period, then you'll go, and you'll go on the bed, and you'll actually give blood. People say, "Oh my gosh, I'm afraid of needles." It's like a pinprick. It's really not that painful. It's just a second, and don't you think a pinprick, a little bit of pain, is worth saving someone's life? That's the fact, because if people don't give blood, patients in the hospitals can't be saved. After you actually are on the bed, then you'll go to the canteen where you have some nice juice and cookies, and you'll stay there for about 10 minutes, and then the entire process is done. Typically, it takes about an hour, an entire hour.
And of course, the reason for the milk, or the orange juice, rather, and cookies is what again?
Well, we want to make sure that you're properly hydrated. You've given a pint of blood. Most people have about 10 to 12 pints in there. So we want to make sure your blood sugar level is up, and that's why the juice and the cookies are there, to make sure your blood sugar level is up, given that you've just lost a pint. It's perfectly safe. We tell people, "Don't go run a marathon after you've given blood. Don't fast, because you need your strength when you've given blood, given that a pint of you is no longer there." But that's the general process.
You touched on it briefly, but I want to make sure that you get a chance to talk about the testing process that's done to make sure that the blood is safe for use. You can't say that every unit that's donated is completely safe, but you can say it's safer than it's ever been, I guess.
Sure. The blood supply is very, very, very safe. We make the blood supply safe through two ways. One is we ask a number of questions upfront to screen out people who may be at risk of, who may have some risk factors that could endanger patients. That's why we ask questions about, "Have you had hepatitis? Do you have syphilis?", those kinds of questions. Then, at the end product, once the blood is collected, at the end of the day, there's a bag of blood, a number of bags of blood at a big blood drive, like about 150 pints we had through the Parker Center in the LA City Hall just the other day. Basically, we have the bags of blood there, and then those bags of blood will be sent to our main headquarters in Pomona. It'll be separated out, and a tube, tubes will be sent to our national testing labs throughout the country. Most of our tubes will go to Portland, Oregon. And there, we'll test for a number of factors using nucleic acid testing, which makes our testing even more specific. And we'll test for HIV, hepatitis, syphilis, a number of other diseases, to ensure that the blood is safe.
Now, I'm curious, what is your best donor pool? More men or more women donate? Older, younger, people who are involved in volunteer activities? Who?
It's about the same. Men and women generally donate about the same amount. Women, though, have to be especially, take a special care to make sure they eat iron-rich foods. One of the top reasons why people who show up to donate can't actually donate the day of the blood drive is because their iron level is too low. The standards that the Food and Drug Administration sets are based pretty much on male standards. So consequently, women have to amp up their iron levels in order to give blood. So typically, we say, eat broccoli, liver, well, some people don't like liver so much, so dark chocolate, dark greens, those are some foods that you can eat to get your iron level up. But basically, men and women pretty much donate about the same amount. With respect to age, I'll tell you, one of our top, people think, "Oh, the slacker generation, the young people really aren't about volunteerism." That's actually false. About 20% of the blood that we collect in Southern California comes from high school and college students. High school and college students really sustain the patients of Southern California. And consequently, when we have blood shortages, it's during the summer and winter, when school's out. So we've engaged in a number of programs to try to reach out to students, young people, to give blood during the summer. And we're trying, and if we hadn't engaged in some of those programs, our blood shortage would be even worse.
You've been talking about blood and donation, but you also need volunteers to help during blood dri- By the way, the volunteers don't actually take the blood, do they?
No. Actually, it's trained medical personnel. We actually go through a very rigorous training for our medical assistants and collections technicians, to ensure that they are trained in our procedures, which are approved by the Food and Drug Administration. Essentially, we need volunteers on every single blood drive. Typically, we need two volunteers on every blood drive. So if we're organizing on the order of 40 blood drives a day in Southern California, every day, we need about 80 people to assist in the blood drive operation. The volunteers will greet the donors, say hello, say thank you so much for being there, and volunteers will be in the canteen to pass out the juice and cookies, and to ensure the donors are doing okay after they give their blood donation. If you think about it, in Southern California, we have about, on the order of 200 to 225,000 people regularly giving blood. We have another 8,000 to 10,000 people who are involved in volunteering to organize blood drives, and we have another 3,000 to 4,000 people who are actually volunteering. It is a tremendous volunteer organization, just in Southern California alone. All of that volunteer energy basically keeps patients alive.
You just touched on something I want to make sure that it doesn't slip by people. You talked about people volunteering to actually organize blood drives. We'll get to the website and the phone number in a little while, but what sorts of people would be volunteering to actually organize, and what do they have to do?
Well, we call them our American Red Cross ambassadors, because they're our ambassadors to the organizations throughout Southern California. The schools, the businesses, the colleges, the hospitals, the religious organizations. We need volunteers who are actually a part of the community. It's a lot easier when you're asking someone to give a part of themselves, to stick a needle in their arm, or to have someone stick a needle in their arm. It's a lot easier to hear that from someone you know, who's a part of your community, as opposed to some random person from the Red Cross. Although, our Red Cross people do reach out to strangers, it's a lot better and much more effective to have someone who's a part of your community ask you to donate blood, which is a very intimate act, and requires a personal ask from someone that you know. So we typically, we will have, in an organization, we will have an ambassador. That ambassador is responsible for securing the logistics, getting the room, or in case a room is not available, a place where a bus can be parked. They are the ones who coordinate with us, to tell us, you know, we'll coordinate with them when our staff will arrive. They're the ones who will be there with respect to providing tables and chairs. And the most important thing, the absolute most important thing, is to getting people to sign up, to spread the word. This is true grassroots marketing. It means going out there and reaching into the organization to say, "Please, can you join me in saving a life? Can you give blood on this day?" The ambassadors are critical to the success of the Southern California blood collection operation, and frankly, critical to blood drives nationwide.
In the beginning, you mentioned the Red Cross Charter for Disaster Preparation Response Recovery, things like that. But how did blood get into the picture? When was that, and who was responsible for that?
So, basically, the modern blood banking era really began with the Red Cross, and Dr. Charles Drew was a real pioneer in setting up the blood bank. And it really occurred because the troops during World War II needed blood. And that's really where the blood, the modern, or the 20th century, blood collection operation really began, is thanks to Dr. Charles Drew. And from there, it really blossomed throughout the entire country, because people realized, physicians realized, you really could keep people alive longer with blood transfusions. And frankly, when we talk about blood shortages, not only are fewer people donating, which is a problem, but the demands for medical technology to keep people alive is growing as people live longer, as people want hip replacements and knee replacements. All of these procedures will generally require blood. So consequently, the need is continuing.
And certainly, Dr. Charles Drew, a name very familiar to Southern Californians. Finally, I want to make sure that people, if they would like to donate blood, or volunteer, or put together a blood drive in their community, tell us how they get in touch, how they find out what to do.
It's a real simple number. Go to www.givlife.org, www.givlife.org, or call 1-800-GIVE-LIFE, 1-800-GIVE-LIFE. Call to volunteer, call to organize a blood drive, and call to donate blood. We really need your help.
And we really needed the opportunity to hear it all from you today. Cliff Newmark, American Red Cross, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thanks so much.
Well, you've certainly gotten the idea by now that our blood supply is dangerously low. People are needed to donate now and in the coming weeks to prevent a medical disaster. Please, help save a life. Donate now. Watch Council Week in Review for highlights of the week's meetings, and listen for item numbers associated with those discussions you have an interest in. Then go to the world wide web and listen to those discussions using the new City of Los Angeles Video On Demand feature. Visit the city's website at lacity.org, and follow the instructions on the screen. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending July 20, 2007. On behalf of Francisco Montano and everyone here at LA City View, Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Life on the streets, hanging with the homies, slinging drugs, doing drugs, doing time. This isn't what I wanted my life to be. I watched my homies drop like flies. I was shot with an AK-47, and I realized it didn't have to be this way. I made the transition from gangs to school. Someone helped me, and someone can help you. There is hope, and you can make a difference.
Hello, I'm Councilmember Wendy Gruel. Ovarian cancer is one of the leading causes of death in American women. Each year, 20,000 women are diagnosed, and nearly 15,000 will die. Our best defense against the dangers of ovarian cancer is early detection. A woman's chance for survival is greater if the cancer is found early. So please, be sure to have your annual physical, a pelvic exam, and a regular blood test. Contact the Ovarian Cancer Coalition for more information on signs and symptoms. Early detection can help save lives.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 24, 2007. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by my colleagues, Councilmembers Gruel, Hahn, Weesar, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Wesson, and Zine. We are awaiting Councilmembers Alarcon, Smith, and Weiss to join us, if they will please come down as soon as possible. Councilmember Alarcon, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Weiss, we need you to establish a quorum for our meeting. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 a.m. in City Council chambers, except for the first Friday of the month, which we meet in Van Nuys City Hall, in our effort to bring City Council closer to all Angelenos. We invite members of the public down here to watch, as well as our viewers on Channel 35, LA City View, who we welcome through the airwaves. We are available online at lacity.org, where you can watch live-streaming webcast video of our council meetings. And finally, you can catch us online at lacity.org through our podcast, and also some of our video-on-demand services of old council meetings. If you are close to a telephone- If you are close to a telephone, you can always use Council Phone, which is (213) 621-CITY. And you can listen to any of our committee meetings, or the full council committee is full council meetings as well. With that, Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardinals, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum. Mr. President?
If I can please ask everybody to, and ask the Sergeant-at-Arms to assist us in bringing some of our conversations to a close. Councilmembers, we're going to run through the agenda first, so folks will watch closely for any items to call special. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Mr. Perry, sorry, Ms. Perry seconds. My apologies, Ms. Perry. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rosendahl moves that, and Mr. Wesson seconds. Without objection, those two will be approved. Next order of business?
Mr. President, before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a, excuse me, there is a flag salute agendaized for today's meeting.
Okay, if I can please ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Weezer, if you would be kind enough to join us, I mean, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you very much. Please stand, put your hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Someday.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. Next order of business, please? If we can run through the agenda before the public comment?
Before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to continue items 28 through 33 to August 14th.
Okay, is there any objection to continuing those? If not, so ordered. Next items?
On the regular agenda, item one is a special presentation by CDD. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold that on the desk.
Item two is the Hollywood Media Lighting District Notice for Public Hearing.
Okay. We do not have cards on that, we'll open and close that. We do not expect, well, why don't we hold that on the table, actually, for, we might get 12 members in about 15 minutes. Next items?
Items three through nine are Street Lighting District Items Notice for Public Hearing. Council should continue the hearing and ordinances to August 7th.
Okay, is there any objection to continuing those ordinances, the public hearing? If not, we will do so on items three through nine. Next items, please.
Items 10 through 33 are items which public hearings have been held. Items 10 and 11 are confirmation as commissioners. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Okay, yes, let's please hold the commissioners on the desk. Colleagues, anybody wishing to call any of the other items special, 12 through 33? 12 through 33, any specials? If not, let's go ahead then on the balance, and please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 34 through 58 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. Item 34 is a commission appointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please, and let's hold the ordinances as well, until we might have 12 members. That leaves 46 to 58, colleagues, any specials? Mr. Reyes?
Like to receive and file 47 and 48.
Okay. Mr. Reyes moves, I will second that, if there's no objection. As we vote, those will be to receive and file. Mr. Rosendahl?
Continue for two weeks.
Okay, there's no objection to continuing two weeks, which take us to August 7th, and that's on item number 45. And you wanted 51 specials, well?
Special.
Okay, 51 for Mr. Rosendahl. We have cards, Mr. Clerk, on some of these as well?
There are cards on item 49, 52, and 57.
Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead on the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. And I had a request by Mr. Rosendahl to take 51 out of order. Mr. Rosendahl, if there's no objection, anybody object? Hearing none, we will take 51. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a very sad agenda item. This young man, Eric Lorenzo, young man, 20-year-old young man, was gunned down coming out of a store on Lincoln Boulevard in my district. His mother, who's standing with me, lives in Mr. Parks's district. And we'd like to say a few words about her son and ask you for unanimous support for a $50,000 reward.
Good morning to the council, and a special thank you to Councilmember Bill Rosenthal and Mark Grant. This is my cousin Eric. Eric spent 20 years in South Central and survived it. This is a good kid. He's been working as a ramp agent at LAX for two and a half years. In two minutes on Venice and Lincoln, someone had the nerve to come from behind and put two bullets in his head and leave him on the ground with his brains scattered. And his mother had to come out and see this. No parent should have to see their child in that condition. We urge City Council to vote on the $50,000 and to approve it, because hopefully, because I'm sure that someone in Lincoln and Venice saw something, and maybe the $50,000 will urge them to come out and, you know, just say whatever they have seen. This is very important to our family. One person died on that day, but several lives ended on that day. Our lives will never be the same again. We are scared to let our children go out. Our children should be able to go out on the street, on the sidewalk, up and down in their neighborhoods, and we are fearful. This city is supposed to be run by City Council, and is supposed to be run by the mayor and the Board of Supervisors. And our children, most of them, most people don't even know where City Council is, City Hall is, but they know where the gangs are. It's time to put a stop to this endless murder. It makes absolutely no sense. So, and this is my cousin Tiola, and this is the mother.
I ask for unanimous support on that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved, and without objection, we'll send that to the mayor forthwith. And thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl, and thank you, our sympathies to the entire If we can return. Items 10, 11, and 34 are commissioners that we're holding on the desk. If there's no objection, we'll take up our commissioner nominations next, starting with the first one.
That would be item 10, and that is the appointment of Ms. Felicia Fasano to the El Pueblo de Los Angeles Historical Monument Authority.
Okay, I'd like to come forward, want to thank you very much for putting yourself forward for service to the people of Los Angeles. I know Mr. Labange is excused on city business this week, and it came through his committee, and otherwise would, of course, I'm sure, speak of the committee's unanimous vote and support, but if you'd like to tell the council about your interest in this position and in serving the people of Los Angeles through El Pueblo?
Thank you very much. Oh, I was forward. I'd be honored to be part of El Pueblo and to share our city's multi-ethnic history, but also to educate the population through its historical monuments. I'd also like to thank all of the members of the council for their support in the restoration of Italian Hall.
Thank you. Any members wishing to be heard on this nomination for El Pueblo? If not, Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for your willingness to serve, Ms. Fasano. I represent El Pueblo on my council district, and we've been doing a lot of work there, thanks to the leadership of the management we have there. I actually served as a commissioner a few years ago, and it's very exciting to see the birthplace of Los Angeles get the attention it has right now. So many balls are in the air right now, we have to make sure we catch all of them and continue moving this place forward. I was really excited with the support of this council. Through the budget process, we allocated $500,000 to renovate the Italian Hall, as you mentioned. You mentioned that was an interesting point of yours. I just asked that we move forward as quickly as possible, get the report done, so we could start the construction on that site. I know a lot of people in Los Angeles are looking forward to that site done. Italians throughout the city stopped me, asked me when that's going to be completed, so there is a lot of attention. And it's exciting that the Pico House, that area there, that's, a lot of discussions happening about finally bringing that to life. We've got some beautiful structures there, that the exterior has been taken care of. We're really excited to now look internally to bring people there as well, so that, we're really excited about that as well. So we look forward to working with you, and thank you for your service to the birthplace of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll and the nomination. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Congratulations. A round of applause for our commissioner.
Thank you.
And if we can take up the next nomination?
Item 11 is the reappointment of Ms. Ramona Ripston to the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority.
Great, if we can ask Ms. Ripston to come forward and recognize the Chair of our Housing Committee, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. This morning, we had an opportunity in committee to have a quality discussion with Ms. Ripskin and where relates to the reappointment. We found out some very interesting things that this, first of all, we found out that one year goes really quickly, and that the lion's share of her time, along with her colleagues, has been to reorganize this commission so that it is functional. So I, for one, am excited about the direction and that the adjustments of the staff, and the committee recommended that the full council support this reappointment. So I would be the first one to, you know, raise my voice and say, "Wesson, aye."
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, our Chairperson, Cosmo Wesson, but I did want to address the question that I offered this morning, and I wanted the rest of the council to hear. In terms of our, where we are at as an organization, seeing that other entities, albeit smaller or more light at foot in terms of dealing with services, where there actually are entities who are able to place folks who've been homeless for eight years, that with a strong core of support systems, a doctor, psychiatrist, folks who help them become independent, can actually be placed throughout the city without creating a crisis or without creating a spotlight, and actually become part of the neighborhood and the fabric of that community. It's a different approach, where traditionally, we've tended to group people into populations where we create economic ghettos. This other approach, is that something that you can see LAZA evolving into? Or are we still at a place where LAZA is trying to get its feet on the ground and trying to assert itself as an organization? I just want to get a feel for that, where we're at as an entity.
Thank you, thank you for that question. I think that's a very good question. As the Chair of the Committee said, we have spent the first year, the first year that I was on the commission, getting the commission in order. And I think we are now financially sound. I think we have a new splendid executive director who is doing a more than competent job. I think the city and county members of the commission are working together. So I do think we are ready to tackle some of the more pressing problems, one of which you've just raised. I do think that one of the problems that we have in the city is the problem of nimbyism. I think that there are people who don't want anything to do with homelessness, and they don't want any kind of facility, be it a shelter, be it a facility that offers services, whether they are educational services, or employment services, or mental health services, not in their backyard. And we intend to overcome that. I, in my personal capacity, am looking for foundation funding to try to get a public awareness program of why nimbyism is the wrong way to go, why we as a society need to place people who need our help all throughout the city, and that residents of this city, because they care and should care, should accept these people.
I think the beauty of this approach, though, is they're not actually creating a facility. They're actually working with existing units, existing apartments and or condominiums, whatever is available, and actually are able to, I guess, sprinkle in or filter in folks without making it obvious or creating this big headline saying, "I'm homeless." There are actually folks who can be submerged into what might be called a natural or a practical way of dealing with people. So I thought that was the beauty of that approach, and I'm hoping that someday, like you said, perhaps we can be in a place as a city where not only other communities, but other cities will accept the responsibility of dealing with these issues, but...
Well, there is one now in Castaic, as you probably know, a place for women and children who can stay there for long periods of time and be educated and learn, you know, how to hold a job and what you'll have to do. I think those kinds of places are necessary, and I think they need to be, not only throughout the city, but throughout the county. And I think that is something that we all have to work toward.
Then, again, thank you so much. I know it's one of the hardest and most heartbreaking issues that we have facing this city, but I appreciate your straightforwardness, and I'm hoping that with your legal prowess, as well as those that are around you, we can hold other entities accountable for their responsibilities, so thank you so much.
Believe me, I'm going to try. I think that the problem of homelessness is a blight on the city and this county, and I think we all have to work together to try to do something about it. And believe me, I will do my best to try.
Again, thank you. We're going to hold this on the desk, we have 12 members for about one minute right now, colleagues, so just stay right where you are. Ms. Ripston, if we can hold that on the desk and take up the ordinances, that's numbers 2, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, and 45. I'm sorry, 45 was continued to August, not 45. And if we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, one no.
Okay, those will carry over. Mr. Smith? You want to know on the ordinances, on all of them? Or did you want to take any of them out? Was it one specifically? We held this for a second. Okay, let's do a revote. This is on items 2 and then 35 through 44. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved, and those will go forward on the first reading. Thank you very much. If we can return now, and Mr. Rosendahl was our next speaker.
Good morning. Good morning. Ramona, in your experience of the last couple of years in this position, tell us the good news and also tell us the frustrations that you have gone through. Well, I was on the commission for just one year, although I've worked on homeless problems for a good part of my life. During the year, when I first arrived at the LAZA Commission, the commission was in a state of disarray. The executive director, who was a very kind-thinking man and wanted to do the best thing, was not a good financial manager, and so LAZA had lots and lots of financial problems. The executive director left, and we hired an auditor, an outside auditor, and we found that everything was not in order, but all the money was there. There was no malfeasance of any kind that had taken place. After that, we did a national search for a new executive director, and she is enormously, Rebecca Isaacs, enormously competent, and I think we're on a new path now. The other problem in the beginning, I thought that the city and the county representatives had to get to know each other and had to agree that we wanted to work together to solve this problem. So I think those problems have been overcome, and I think we're now at a point where we can start to tackle some of the problems we see in this city. Some of the difficulty is that it is not really understood or known exactly what LAZA should do. LAZA was reached as part of a consent decree, and we now funnel the money that HUD gives the city through LAZA. I think we've been talking about that, we've had orientations about what we can do, and I think we can now begin to look at the problem of what needs to be done in this city to try, and this county, to try to do something about something about ending the problem of people not having homes. The problems that we face are that people who are living on the streets are, for the most part, mentally ill. Most of them have dual problems. They're not only mentally ill, they also are addicted to substances. We find that there are many women and children these days living on the streets, that there are many veterans living on the streets, and that these different needs need to be analyzed and put together. We also know from what's happened in other cities that the one thing that people need is low-cost housing, low-cost housing with services. People need to have services. It takes a while to get someone with mentally... who is mentally ill to believe that you really want to help. I think those problems can be solved. I think it's a long-range problem. I do believe, however, that in the long term, it will cost the city and the county a lot less money to develop some low-cost housing and to give these people some services. Councilwoman Janice...
Perry?
Perry raised a very good question with me this morning, and that was the other cities in our county who are not assuming their fair share of this problem. And I hope that that is one of the problems we can work on, that they should be contributing more to see that we do have the money that's needed to solve some of these problems.
Very articulate, Ramona. I appreciate everything you just shared with us. And what is your take on the Safe Cities Initiative and the downtown situation and the homeless on the streets there or those in the central jail? What's your whole take on that strategy over the last six months?
The problem of Safe Cities is that it hasn't lived up to what it had said it was going to do. It said it was going to be a place where there would be services for people who are homeless, whether there would be... and there would be low-cost housing, there'd be more shelter beds, there would be a rejuvenation of some of the places downtown. None of that has taken place. The only thing that has happened is the overzealous law enforcement. That was one of the components, that there would be law enforcement. I mean, we all want to see drug dealers arrested. What we don't want to see is innocent people being set up to eventually end up in jail. People who get jaywalking tickets, for example, they don't go to court because they don't have the money to go to court, and they never get to court. So they get another jaywalking ticket, and they never appear in court. They end up in jail. It costs the county money to keep those people in jail. Once they get out of jail, they have a record and can't get any services of any kind from the federal government. So they are lost, and they are reduced to homelessness forever. So we need to stop what's going on in terms of the overzealous enforcement. But again, I want to repeat, I want people who commit crimes to be arrested. We're in favor of arresting people who commit crimes, but not sending people to jail because they had too many jaywalking tickets.
So is that what happened?
And that's been happening. It certainly has been happening. I think if the city, county had delivered on the problem, on the problem, or the... well, I shouldn't say the promises of the Safe City Initiative, I think it could have worked. But I think at this point, it's been skewed only to focus on the enforcement of the problem.
My last question is, what can we do as a city council at this point in time to assist you in what seems to be a very challenging and daunting mission?
Well, I think the city has to take a chance. First of all, I think the city and the county has to begin to really work together and to understand this is a joint problem and not just a city problem. This is a county problem as well.
Yeah, I might just say on that, just for the information, Supervisor Yaroslavsky and I are working together.
I'm glad to hear that.
And we are in the process of identifying a location where we are going to have a center that will house homeless men and women, and in the center will be all of the services so that they can connect to the services. And Supervisor Yaroslavsky has been extremely generous with his time and energy, and the money will come forward, and we're very hopeful we'll announce it down the road a piece when everything is in order. But in this case, I can tell you firsthand, the county of Los Angeles and the city are working together. It's everybody's problem, and we all need to take certain amount of responsibility for it. Even Culver City and us are working on an upward bound project that we're going to announce, and so there's several in my district happening right now. So I think there is political will on the county level, but we at the city as well have to hook in with our county counterparts. Do you see that happening?
Well, I think it's to everyone's best interest to solve this problem. I mean, I love this city. This is my home. I've been here 35 years. I expect to stay here forever. I want this city to be a first-class city, and as long as we permit the kind of situation we have downtown, we won't be a first-class city. We are the homeless capital of the United States. And I don't think that's a distinction that we want. I think we have to work together. I think we can work together. I think, I repeat, the suggestions that were made to me this morning about going after the cities that are not doing their share is a very, very good suggestion. I've already been aware of it. I've recently been made aware of it, and we've begun to look into it. I think LSA can help with these things. I think that the gentrification of the city is a good thing, but you can't do that at the expense of homeless people. I think it all has to come together, and I believe other cities have done it, and I think we can do it here with the city and county working together. And I think LSA can help to bridge that gap between the city and county, which is why LSA was originally set up, to bridge the chasm between the city and the county, and to establish that it is the responsibility of both parties.
Well, thank you, Ramona, for stepping back up to the plate again for another confirmation.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service to us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Colleagues, we have two more speakers. I just want folks to know, we will lose quorum today, possibly as early as at 11:00 and maybe 11:30 due to a funeral. So if we could keep our questions to a minimum, we haven't taken public comment yet either, and we still have a number of folks. So with that, Mr. Zine and Mr. Weisar for some brief questions. Mr. Zine?
Yeah, thank you. I'll keep it brief. You mentioned a city and the county. I know the city has done a lot, Jan Perry's done a lot. Is the county stepping up to the plate? Is the county falling behind in their obligation responsibilities? From your perspective?
Well, you know, what Councilmember Rosendahl just spoke to me about, I really was unaware of, and I accept that that is happening, and if that is happening, that's a very satisfying thing. When I first joined LSA, there was some tension between the five members from the city and five members from the county. It's taken us a little while to work together, to get to know each other, to understand that we do want to solve this problem. I think it is possible for the city and county to work together. I mean, the county, when we put people in jail, we are costing the county money, so that we need to solve the problem that impinges on both the city and the county if we're going to solve this problem. And I believe we can do it. I think we can do it, but it takes cooperation.
But to this point, have you found the county being cooperative? That's the question, because I know that...
No, I haven't found them uncooperative. I just think that there has to be more cooperation to make a success of solving this problem of people living without homes.
And as far as the arrest situation goes, you do support law enforcement doing arrests in the proper situation, in the proper environment?
I support police officers arresting people who are committing crimes, who are selling drugs, who are prying on poor people who don't have homes. I don't necessarily approve of police officers asking people whether they're on probation or parole. We had to go to court to stop that. You know, if you walk along a city street, Councilman Zine, nobody will stop you and ask you whether you're on probation or parole. Nobody will ever ask me whether I'm on probation or parole. Homeless people have rights, too, and they shouldn't be stopped by police officers unless the police officer happens to be able to identify the person involved.
Involved in some illegal activity?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Weisar?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'll keep this short. Quick question. In your one year on this commissioner committee on LSA, how often have you guys talked about kids? It's one of the fastest-growing populations in Skid Row, and it's Catch-22. Some services don't want to provide services to kids. They don't think it's the right place for kids to be, but at the same time, they exist, they need the services. Has it been a focus of discussion by LSA or not, or should we pay more attention?
I think we have to pay attention to it. I think we've been so busy putting LSA back together that we haven't dealt or given enough time to some of these problems. I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, I've gone down to school on wheels. I don't know if you're familiar with school on wheels. These are children who live in shelters, who come after school to be tutored, to learn some more. And what they really need is also, beside tutoring, is love and affection and somebody who cares about them, and they just gravitate to the people who volunteer down there. You are absolutely right. There are more women and children on the street, and we have to do something about that, because these children on the street are the next generation of homeless people if we don't do something to solve the problem. Now, there are some impediments to the rules. I mean, I was at a LSA meeting where a man from outside the city came and said that his housing voucher... I mean, he was a provider, that the people who were in his facility had run out of the voucher that they needed to stay there, and they got another voucher for another place, but that meant the three children had to transfer to another school. Children are being transferred from school to school to school, and any of us who have been parents know how difficult it is to bring up children when they're a loving parent and stability and enough money. These children suffer from all of those things, and I think that LSA has to work on it, but I think we all have to work on it. It is a problem. You're absolutely right.
I recently read a report on some very specific recommendations as to what we could be doing, and generally, the statement that was made was that for services in Skid Row, generally, there's no services for kids. Is that an accurate statement?
I think you're probably right. I hadn't really focused on that before, but I think you're probably right. There are services for people who are mentally ill. There are services for people who are addicted to substances. I don't know of any particular services other than school on wheels, where people are tutoring people, but people need... I mean, children who are people, those children need more than just tutoring and people who care. They do need services, and it is something that I'll look into. I can't tell you that I know of any right now.
Thank you. Well, we've done some efforts, along with Councilwoman Perry, to clean up Gladys Park down there, but I think now we need some programmatic funding to provide some programs for the young people who are looking for something to do out there. Many of them are indoors 24 hours a day, sometimes rightly so, because it's not an environment where these kids should be. But just something that I'd like to work with you and rest of LSA to continue to focus on, and I think the statistic was about 800 kids on Skid Row who are homeless there. And another statistic that was pretty alarming was that in 1990, 1% of the homeless in Skid Row were kids. In 2000, it was 50% of the homeless in Skid Row. So whether that's accurate or not, I've seen some other numbers that does show they're increasing, and so we've got to address that somehow, and hopefully, we could continue working with you on that.
There certainly is a growing number of women and children on Skid Row, whether it's gone from 1% to 50%.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, did you...
Fifteen, yeah.
Fifteen, oh, I'm sorry. That's probably true. I mean, there probably has grown that much during that period of time. I would be extraordinarily happy to work with you and Councilwoman Jan Perry on this problem, because I think kids deserve a better chance.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that's our last speaker on the queue. Again, I want to thank you for your service, Ms. Ripston, and congratulate you on the nomination as well. Let's go ahead and open the roll on the renomination. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one no.
Okay, that is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next item, please. Next commissioner.
Item 34 is the appointment of Ms. Julie Gutman to the Board of Public Works Commissioners.
Okay, I'd like to come forward as well and like to recognize the Chair of our Public Works Committee, Mr. Rosendahl, to open our comments on the nomination.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilmembers, I must tell you that this lady's got more enthusiasm, energy, smarts than anybody I've met running for a commissionership in a long time. Explain to me why you want this position as a commissioner and what you bring to the table.
All right. I want to serve as a Board of Public Works Commissioner because I see it as an exciting opportunity to bring my skills and experience to bear in working in partnership with the city council, with the office of the mayor, and with other members of the Board of Public Works, to move the city forward through Public Works, to provide well-planned, efficient, environmentally sensitive, and cost-effective infrastructure and services to the city's residents, workers, businesses, and visitors, to help create a business-friendly environment for those who contract with Public Works while at the same time ensuring the contractors comply with the city's policies, also to increase local hiring, education, and job training programs, so that our residents benefit from jobs that are created and so that our workforce is developed to reflect the diversity of our community. I believe I shared these goals with the council members, the mayor, and current members of the Board of Public Works, and I believe my years of experience in labor management relations and redevelopment and academic development will serve me well as I work with all of you today, in the future. If I am confirmed today, I will dedicate my time on the board to working as part of a team to achieve these and other common goals.
Well, thank you for that, and there are two issues very important to me and to many of my colleagues on the horseshoe here. One is point of sale, which means getting our sidewalks fixed. Eighty-three years to get our sidewalk fixed. Our folks out there know they ain't going to get their sidewalks fixed, at least not in our lifetime if it's 83 years. Point of sale means that when you sell your house, part of the process would be the monies for getting the sidewalks repaired and a process put in place to get them done. So in a 10- to 12-year period, we can get all of our sidewalks done. Your thoughts on that?
I know this is a very big problem, and I understand that it is before Public Works Board shortly, and that is something that sounds like a very good idea to me, and I would want to look closely and would hope to support it. Sounds like it's very important.
And the other issue is our streets. Look, let's be honest about it. The city has not reinvested in its infrastructure, period, okay? Year after year after year after year. So it's good 60 years to get all of our streets fixed, and people come to me every day and want to get on the list, and the list is the list, and you only get so many miles per district, we only have so much money put out. So we want to put a billion and a half-dollar bond measure on the ballot November of '08. Mr. Smith and I are working very closely on that, as are all my colleagues. Mr. Cardenas was a big leader on this and is a big leader on it, and so are everybody around the horseshoe. For $1.5 billion, we can actually get all of our streets done in a 10- to 12-year period. Your thoughts about that ballot measure potential?
Well, I hear what you're saying, and I do understand and agree that the biggest obstacle is that the limited resources we have, and that therefore, a bond may be very important to meet these needs for the critical services we need and the problems that are in our streets. So I certainly do support going forward and looking at alternative ways to increase our resources through a bond, so we can take care of important services that are needed in the city.
Well, we look forward to your leadership on that. I know your colleagues on the commission are all excited about us moving forward with that. We're going to make the voters aware of something where they can actually see something done in their lifetime. We have to reinvest in our infrastructure. Thanks for stepping up to the plate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Before I call on the next speaker, I wanted to introduce some special guests that are visiting, some high school students that are with us today. The National Youth Leadership Forum on Medicine introduces outstanding high school students to the world of medicine. With its 10-day program, introduces students to professionals with some of the nation's top medical centers and faculty from renowned institutions of learning. We wanted to welcome those high school students. If you wouldn't mind standing up, we'd love to give you a round of applause, and thank you for being here today. Thanks very much, and thank you for joining us. Our next speaker on the queue is Councilmember Gruel.
That's me, yes. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I...
And I wanted to rise to support Julie's appointment. We had an opportunity to sit down last week, and it was clear, I think, as Mr. Rosendahl said, she's got a lot of energy and attention and committed and passionate about the city and about providing the services and particularly ensuring that all residents of Los Angeles get the same quality of service, whether it be through the, we talked about the 50-50 sidewalk program that we created, to ways in which we can look creatively at providing some of these services and that what is most important to our constituents is what Public Works does and what Cynthia Ruiz is, as the President of the Commission, has so aptly created an environment there of a can-do for the city and for our residents. And so I'm looking forward to your tour of duty here as a Public Works Commissioner and particularly as we go out into each of our neighborhoods and to show you where the problems are and how we can respond to them. And everything from trash being picked up to the street repair, to building the buildings that we want to see, whether it be a senior center, a recreation center, a police station, whatever it may be, Public Works is at the helm. And so I just want to say thank you and congratulations because I know you'll get a unanimous support today, but look forward to working with you. And your credentials, I think, are outstanding for you to be able to do this. But the best credential is that you're passionate and you care. And so I'm glad that you are going to be a new Public Works Commissioner. So congratulations. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Anybody else wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner. We'll send that forthwith to the mayor for a signature.
Thank you very much.
We've had folks very patiently waiting for public comment, which we'd like to take up next, and we want to thank them. We had a possible loss of a quorum here, so we wanted to make sure that we took care of those business items. Oscar Johnson is going to be our first speaker for general public comment. We have about 14 speaker cards, so for those folks in Van Nuys, just sit tight. Matt Dowd will be next here in council chambers after that. Good morning, Mr. Johnson.
Good morning, Councilmember. My name is Oscar Johnson, active member in Los Angeles and society. What homeless situation and our many other problems that we have inherit, you know, the 21st century through our political system as politicians and races speaking is a very big issue today. But we should find a way to care for every living member in society in some type of form of action. And also, we should assist upon our members in society accepting more responsibility. Because seem as though without responsibility and no supervision. And without supervision, we almost in a state of loss as in the animal kingdom. But something happened in this society in America in the last 30 years. We have been blinded with entertainment. We have been people made and been sentenced upon entertainment, want somebody to make us happy, want somebody to make us laugh, instead of looking at our own self. But the problem today is we face this in Los Angeles. We see drugs, that we want drugs off the street, but yet still, we have liquor stores all over our community. There seem to be no difference between drugs and liquor that being sold. Liquor is sold legally, but drugs is sold illegally. But we are asking for all liquor stores to be closed in the city of Los Angeles, and we're asking for the police department to be diminished and send that revenues that the police get into another direction. Because the police department is not doing anything more for the citizen of Los Angeles, only thing they're doing is reaping through our, I guess, corruption, MRR, wherever they're supposed to be. But I keep standing here and I keep coming and seem as though I've been taken for a regular that if nothing's going to happen. But I can see, as I feel, but I feel with this new mayor proposal of the MTA bus line, that our MTA bus line have got more money, but our service has gotten very bad. And the mayor keep putting very failed project in the community. Have failed so many times before. They putting eight, spending so much money for eight lines, eight miles of rail. And that money should go in another direction.
Thank you. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. After that, will be Michael Hunt.
Thank you so much. Just want to tell Oscar Johnson that good things happened today. The mayor's done a couple of good things. That was, one was reappointing Ms. Ramona Ripston. Sounds like she's got her head or got her eye on the ball with this downtown thing. We not only need to get children off the street and the elderly. So that's one good thing he can do. Another good thing he could do today, the mayor, is double that reward on item 51 from $50,000 to $100,000. How about doing that? Because I seen the mayor today. He looks like he's in trouble to me. He's got a media scrum all over him, and he's looking pretty sheepish. It seems he's lying now about the timing of his relationship. And I don't really want to talk about these things, but it's problematic in this city. And the problem is he's not trustworthy anymore. He came out with this big fancy AB 1381 to try and do something for the kids, but that didn't work. His heart's not in the right place. And like I said, he's proved where, you know, he's talking out of one side of his mouth during the day, but it looks like at nighttime. Because I'll tell you why. We had a problem with him signing that ordinance 4215, and we tried to make an appointment with the mayor. And we wrote to him, and he wrote back and said, "I'm sorry, I've got scheduling conflicts." Well, let me tell him, I would have had the meeting with a bottle of wine at 10 o'clock at night. So would Michael Hunt. So things need to be fixed. We're all arguing about where the money's coming from to fix these problems. Ramona Ripston's talking about that. I've suggested this multi-jurisdictional coordinating committee to track down all the money from the agencies and put it together so that we know how much money we've got and we can deal with it. Matt Dowd, Channel 35, thank you.
Michael Hunt is our next speaker. After that, will be Richard Kearns. Good morning.
Yes, good morning, City Council. I'm back on the record again. And I just really want to tell you guys, it takes a village to raise a child. The minute you take that village out, you're going to get things like these shootings and everything else. You can't get affordable housing in your community because you're taking all the jobs out of your community because you hadn't listened to what we were saying. Being frank like that, we know that the city attorney's office has a problem with managing a family of four, let alone the second-largest city in the United States. The minute you take out all of his helpers and make it to the point where you can really understand what's going on, go back to your people who put you in office and understand that that's a big part of it and start listening to your constituents, you know, and what they're saying. I am telling my attorneys, we are not signing off on any racial bill. We are not signing off on any bill that segregates one end to another end. That's their solution. It's not the contract they sold us. It's a solution to the 4215, which pushes us way this way and way that way. It's not going to happen. I'm being honest with you guys. You guys can actually stop and go into litigation right now because what we're doing is we're paying six attorneys $550 a hour to do nothing, and it's all going to come back out the same. Progress and best said it, you're going to be trying to figure this out for the next 30 years. You have to listen to what we're saying. They sold us contracts that says inextricably intertwined. Borowog needs to go way back to normal level. It's a tragic that we have to sit and talk about all of these things and nothing still is not going to get done, and the city's still being charged for it. Listen to what I'm saying. I'm just being honest with you guys. Integrity too. Honesty is always the best policy. Once you figure out that the city is not being honest with you, you'll figure out the solution to the problem. Be honest with your people. Understand, Bill, you need to take a role in this. I mean, it's just like, without you, there is no leadership. Thank you, Michael Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Richard Kearns is our next speaker. After that, will be Elliot Katz.
My name is Richard Kearns. I am a 56-year-old gay Angelino, alive with AIDS for more than 20 years. I am a medical cannabis patient and advocate. I am a new media citizen journalist and poet. I stand before you today, risking my life to save my life, pushing my health luck way past safe limits to speak to you this morning. Drug czar John Walters claimed that I am a violent criminal terrorist because I am a cannabis patient and grower, is so foolish and plainly self-serving, it seduces us into not taking it seriously. It can be understood, though. Principle defines Walter's behavior even without informing it. The good is the enemy of the better. We are the stewards of the better. Our mission is to create wiser government using reason, science, rational judgment, and public discourse to change the rules. Our aim is to transform social blight into life. This issue of self-government flies right past drug czar Walters. DEA officers are like bus drivers who despise their riders. Medical cannabis is a part of my AIDS treatment regimen. It keeps me alive and able to contribute to my community. Were there truly safe access in Los Angeles tomorrow morning, I estimate between 25,000 and 30,000 HIV'ers could walk into clinics and improve their chances of survival 3.3 times. 250,000 to 300,000 members of other medically-defined communities would experience similar benefits. Here are three ways you can help us today. One, apply the hardship language in the ICO to ensure our clinics can relocate and stay in service. Two, help us bring pressure to bear on Congress this week to pass the Hinchley-Rohrbacher Amendment, which would cut off DEA funding for medical cannabis investigations. And three, continue our partnership to make medical cannabis access safer. Thank you.
Elliot Katz is our next speaker, and then Anne Ramirez will come after that.
Good morning. My name is Elliot Katz. I grew up and I live in Los Angeles. After I leave here today, I'm going to go to the medical cannabis dispensary. I'm going to purchase medicine with my Visa card, and I'm going to pay sales tax to the state with that purchase. When I walk out the door, the federal government can put handcuffs on me and take me to prison. Today, I'm here to ask you to please apply the hardship language of the ICU to include the existing dispensaries that are going to be forced to move because the federal government is going after their landlords, threatening to take their property away if they let these businesses continue. Caregivers. Do I look like a violent terrorist criminal? I mean, I'm the guy who's probably going to want to walk up to you and give you a flower, you know? Certainly not going to commit any terrorist acts. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Anne Ramirez.
Hello, my name is Anne Ramirez. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak in front of council today. I am a medical marijuana patient as well as a supporter and advocate for the cause. I ask that the city council passes the moratorium on medical marijuana clinics. This would allow the clinics to come together as a community and set up some rules and guidelines that the city can work with and that the members of Los Angeles can all agree to and feel safe about it. Unfortunately, all the media has covered medical marijuana clinics in such a way that it makes it seem like the patients are now criminals. They are not. They follow rules and regulations that aren't even imposed yet, but upon themselves, they take a step forward and to follow these regulations. In San Diego, they said that it was easy to pass your recommendation off to somebody else so that they could obtain the medical marijuana. That statement in itself is false. I think the public needs to be aware that every single patient that gets a recommendation for medical cannabis has been seen by two doctors. These recommendations are not unlimited. They have limitations on them. You must be seen by these two doctors at least once a year. Many times, the recommendations aren't for one year. Sometimes, they're for six months, three months, and one month, just to give the patient enough time to meet with the doctor again to decide if the cannabis is working and this is a route to take. They kill you.
Appreciate it, Ms. Ramirez. Mr. Zine, on this, did you want to again briefly respond?
Just briefly, Mr. President. I just wanted to acknowledge the folks that are here and let you know that tomorrow, this matter will be heard before the city council. That we ask you to contact the medical marijuana users if they want to show up in council tomorrow. It'll be before the city council to implement the moratorium. We've been working on this for a long period of time. It's taken a lot to get to this point. And hopefully, tomorrow will pass, and then we'll implement, and we'll bring legitimacy to that issue where we now have this concern about arrests and DEA, et cetera. So tomorrow's the day in council that we're going to be hopefully passing that moratorium, getting it in place and move forward with the proper regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Our next speaker is here in council chambers, Arnold Sacks. After that, we'll be going out to Van Nuys. Brett Stone will be our first speaker there, to be followed by Lisa Silverman. Mr. Sacks?
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you very much. This article in the LA Times regarding funding cuts for transit from July 20th. There's a claim that by losing this funding, the MTA will lose funding for the Expo line extension that will connect Culver City to Santa Monica. Again, funding for these transportation lines. Where is that in the budget? What about the Foothill exposition? What about the Gold Line-Foothill extension, which has a construction authority but no funding? According to the MTAs, there's no funding. The MTA didn't want to back the Green Line Construction Authority because of the fact that two construction authorities already existed, one being the Foothill Construction Authority and the other being the Expo Construction Authority. The cost for the Expo Construction Authority, according to the MTA, is $640 million. For the Gold Line East Side Extension, the cost is $898 million without a construction authority. All I'm looking for here is some kind of criteria. What is the criteria for having a rail line with a construction authority? The budget involved with these construction authorities could amount to like $60 million, between $50 and $60 million. The MTA Board CEO, Rogers Noble, says the MTA faces a budget deficit of over $1 billion The MTA Board CEO, Rogers Noble, says the MTA faces a budget deficit of over $1 billion in the next 10 years. That's approximately $100 million a year. If you're spending money on construction authorities that total over $50 million, that's almost half the budget deficit. Yet, the Expo, yet the East Side Extension, which was $898 million, was built without a construction authority, and it includes light rail and subway. What is the criteria? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Brett Stone is our next speaker in Van Nuys, and then Lisa Silverman will follow him.
Hi, Brett Stone. Brett Stone is absent, unfortunately. He was unable to obtain his medication because three dispensaries were closed, and he had to resort to pharmaceuticals. My name is Lisa Silverman.
Thank you.
I come here today to put forth a face to clarify who drug czar Walter is applying the appellation of terrorist criminal. For the record, I own no firearms, and I have no police record. I am a middle-aged woman and grad student who has fibromyalgia, and I have back problems and arthritis, among other things, and I suffer substantial chronic pain. I'm here today because of the DEA's new launch of war against sick people via the landlords of our dispensaries. They are threatening my rights once again, and whatever right I have to quality life that I can create for myself. Medical cannabis is key to my living a somewhat quasi-normal life because it enables me to not have to take strong opioids. During the year 2000, I suffered two car accidents and a work injury. The final one changed my life. I am now on disability, and I cannot longer work. I was on extended-release morphine for a little over a year. I was taking MSIR for the breakthrough pain, and I was taking some approximate other five medications and was still in screaming agony. I got tired of this, and I detoxed by myself. No rehabs. I don't have that kind of money. The morphine got tiring. It changed my personality. It substantially interfered with my cognitive processes. It interfered with my medium and short-term memory. This is a cranium. It's not a Jell-O mold. Help me keep it that way. With as many problems as we have in our own backyard, not to mention worldwide, I don't understand why our government is picking on sick people. Cannabis patients are law-abiding citizens. We are educated, and we are aware, and we want to maintain what quality our lives can still have with the help of cannabis. We are entitled to safe medication and safe access. Why would anybody want to criminalize us by sending us to street dealers?
Thank you very much, Ms. Silverman.
After the decision... Yes?
Thank you. The clock, the time is up there.
Oh, my time's up, sorry.
Thank you. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker. While she's coming up, Miriam Fogler will be on deck, and Donna Perman after her. Ms. Brewer?
Hi, Sharon Brewer. First off, please allow the community announcements at the end of city council. How else can the community know what is going on throughout the city? Maybe if the Chair of Education and Neighborhoods would have been able to announce the meeting held yesterday in Van Nuys, more people would have attended. As it was, there were around 60 people there to speak on an agenda item. Community name changed Reseda to Reseda Ranch. Since the only member of the Education and Neighborhoods Committee there was the Chair, there was no quorum. Neither of the other two members showed up. This is the second Education and Neighborhoods Committee meeting held in Van Nuys where only the Chair showed up. Again, no quorum. I put together folders for each of the members of the committee regarding Encino Neighborhood Council June 28, 2007 election challenges. It contains the nine challenges and various communications regarding Encino's election procedures and why Dunn allowed Encino's NC election to go forward. Only the Chair received this folder because the other two members were not at this meeting. I put together these folders because I think the Education Neighborhoods Committee should be looking into how Dunn staff directly affects how a neighborhood council's election goes with regards to challenges. With Encino's election, had the IEA trained by Dunn made sure that the Encino election procedures were in compliance with the citywide election procedures before being submitted to Dunn, and that Encino followed their procedures with regards to notification of the upcoming election to the public, most of the nine challenges would not have been filed. Again, the staff that works for Dunn directly impacts on how an election will go with the neighborhood council. If they give them the proper help, then you won't have any challenges. So please, they need to look into Dunn's involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a point of information, we will continue to have community announcements available through Channel 35. Announcements like committee meetings and the business of the council are still permitted, of course, always after council meetings, and that's what we're trying to do to be respectful of everybody's time. Also, we recommend to the public and any of our viewers, through the city's homepage at lacity.org, there is a community calendar which compiles all of the events that we put together on our individual homepages. It's one of the first links at our lacity.org homepage, and it lists not only our business meetings, but also the community meetings of interest throughout this city. It's a great resource and a good place to check out. Our next speaker is Miriam Fogler, and then Donna Perman.
What I think you're doing here is you're cutting the ties to the whole public by because my brother does not have Channel 35, and not everybody has a computer, and this is not right to just go ahead and do procedural issues, which means that you want to try to find ways. I don't mean to be anything against you, the horseshoe, but this has been throughout history that politicians have done the terrible, most oppressive, and terrible things to the public, and of course, the public has done the derp in too, which is, you know, of course, I can't be speaking for everything, but telling you right now that I'm trying to give you guys an objective point, you know, be open-minded, and I hope you're not trying to do things backroom deals and all that like you did on that retreat, July the 10th to the 11th. I'll never forget what you did there, taking off, and now you're coming out with this procedural issues. This is a very dangerous thing that you are doing because you need to know that you cannot violate our First Amendment right, freedom of speech, that you know you cannot limit us to speaking time and how many times we come here. That's going to be a ramification against you people because we're going to, I'm not going to let that happen. I will not stand by. I will let the public know. I will stand out there in the middle of the park and tell people know what you're doing. So don't think that you can plan things against the public because the public, of course, is going to wake up. One of these days, when it gets so bad, when they can't feed their families and don't have jobs and can't afford to buy a place, the politicians will be in a lot of trouble. I'm just letting you know right now, this is not good.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. For anybody who doesn't have a computer, they can always call 311 or show up to any of our council offices where all of us have flyers of community events and other things that are occurring, and we certainly commend that to anybody who would like to find out what's happening in their community. Next, Donna Perman will speak, and then we'll come back here, and Michael Carrion will be our next speaker after.
My name is Donna Perman, and it's very, yeah, very hard to get a hold of 311. It's busy all the time. Anyway, what I wanted to do was bring a little humor in there and bring my, well, it's actually a song, but I'll have to do it as a poem because I've been doing it to myself, saying it to myself for a while. So here, "Think, People, Think Tune Downtown." Okay, "If you're young and carefree and think everything's great, I will change your mind." Downtown, where the council raises their taxes and those silly fees. Downtown, look at city council while they take the people's money, waiting all this van fees that the city has to pay for. What can you lose? The air is much denser now. You can forget all your troubles, forget all your cares, and go downtown. Rapists are waiting for downtown. Gang members are waiting for downtown. Everyone's waiting for you on Spring Street downtown, where the city council thinks they can do what they want. You can hear them say 12 eyes, where they go take the money and go take the money and pass all the projects on the CRA downtown. Look at city council, they're not listening to the people, even in the city or the ones from Van Nuys Chamber. What can you lose? The air is much denser now. You can forget all your troubles, forget all your cares, and go downtown. Muggers are waiting for downtown. City council is waiting for downtown. Everyone's waiting for you on Spring Street downtown. Little more up-to-date, don't you think? And it forms our public about the city council. Sorry, I didn't put a call 311 where you get a busy signaling time of the day. And I want to tell you that I don't like Proposition R. I do like Los Angeles County and San Fernando Valley, but I don't like Proposition R, where they somehow snuck in that third term on people and all those perks. So people have to wait, work 30 to 40 years to get what you're going to get in 12. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. I think Zuma Dog's going to be quite jealous of you after that song. And I just called 311, did not get a busy signal. I very rarely, if ever, have gotten one, and we will continue to work on that if ever folks do, but please do call 311. It's 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Used it three times this weekend without identifying myself, and it seemed to have worked quite well. But thank you for your song. Michael Carrion will be our next speaker. Mr. Carrion here? Not Leonard Wayne Rose Jr.?
A little remark here. I'm here to talk about the march coming up with August the 4th, 9:00 AM. They're going to start at LA Dream Center in the morning, Saturday, August 4th. We will have march together and three miles, walk to the step to LA City Hall for claiming Jesus is the answer to stop the violence. We're here, the big outreach, going to have a march program, and they're going to join together, that we want the church and state to get joined together, helping these gang members on rehab homes and gang members and people of walk of life, all walk of life. They got LA Dream Center downtown LA, go with the scene, seven days a week, 24-hour day, right downtown, LA Dream Center, and they witness lots of people there. They're on 1040 TBN, and they come on 10 o'clock Friday night, Trinity Broadcast Network on Matthew Barnett, pastor, you know? He got Angeles Temple there, and they got thousands and thousands of members down there too. And we want the church to get together, and I went to LA PD, made a speech this morning too, and that we want to help these people, young people, and all walk of life. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker is out in Van Nuys. Michael Monge, Monje, or Monge?
Go!
We go out to Van Nuys. Excuse me for mispronouncing your name.
This is your time, sir.
Sir Michael Monje?
Okay, he's coming.
Good morning.
Hello.
Go ahead. We'll make sure you get two minutes if you can start speaking. Go ahead.
I've come to ask that the agenda be simplified because I'm having difficulty deciphering it. Oh, and I should, I think it's necessary that I say that it's the first time that I see the agenda, and, well, I flipped through it, and, well, it was very difficult for me to, well, to understand it, to grasp it, because, well, because, like, the paragraphs, I feel, I mean, I...
Tell me your issues with the city. You told me that earlier.
That's true, but, well, this is like my first issue because it's, I feel that the paragraphs are too long. Sorry. Hold on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Monge. We will also, if you ever come down to City Hall, we have council ambassadors to help explain the agenda. There are local high school students that are in the back. We also have the city clerk's office, so we'd be happy to assist. The agenda is split into two different sections, those for which items have been heard already in committee. If that's the case, we do not have a public hearing here in council unless called special by a member, and the public hearing is reopened. Other ones have not yet had a public hearing in committee, and if you fill out a speaker card, you're able to talk on those issues as well for the general agenda. But if you, we have the remote facility in Van Nuys, but we can't afford to have folks there all the time to do the explanations. But if you can ever come down to City Hall, if you'd like to call one of our council offices or the city clerk's office, we'd be happy to walk you through the agenda. We appreciate your comments today. That closes our general public comment. If you can go to the, I believe, CDD, I've been informed, has left on item number one, so we're going to continue that to tomorrow. If we can go to the next item, please.
Item 49, called special for cards from the public.
Okay. We have cards from the public. Sharon Brewer out in Van Nuys on item 49 will be our first speaker. Matt Dowd will be our second, and Donna Perman will come as our third, and we'll go from there. Ms. Brewer?
Hi, Sharon Brewer, item number 49, special event fee waivers. Today, we have 18 total, 14 for a total of $42,682 for reimbursed to the city. Again, we have a, item number P is a farmer's market for $13,642. As I've said before, usually when I look these up, they are for street closures, so I would suggest that they look for possibly using a school or a fenced-in area so they don't have to worry about closing streets. Out of four days that I have totals, there's been 48 items with amounts for a total of So again, we're looking at large amounts of fee waivers, and a lot of them with people that could take and afford to pay for the amounts that they're asking for. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you very much. Matt Dowd is our next speaker, and then Donna Perman.
Yeah, I'm looking for a high school student to explain the agenda to me, folks, but there's none around. But let me tell you, it's way more difficult than that, and that's for a reason. But let me tell Sharon Brewer, Van Nuys, that we've finally achieved victory with these fee waivers. It's an important function of the city, and we've been on it for a while, but you don't need to add them up anymore because from how I see it, all the commercial ones are being reimbursed, which is what we've wanted. It's the Jack Weiss Clause. It's finally come in. Here we have one, C, the BPM Magazine, they're reimbursing that. Rush Hour 3, but here's one, we need to pay for the Ninth Annual Ovarian Cancer Walk, Gruel and Labonge. Important street closures, that's a good one. Don't add them up anymore. They're all in order. We can afford that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Donna Perman is next. That'll be followed by Miriam Fogler.
Okay, yeah, okay. This is Donna Perman, and I don't agree with that other man. This is not something that we can afford, and I don't believe that that's going to be reimbursed because you're just going to turn around another day and then all of a sudden say, then all of a suddenly, the city has picked it up because it has been done before. And so he's living in a pipe dream. He doesn't realize that the CRA is taking all the money and building all these things like the mega mall, which is we don't need over there in Zine's district, where they're going to take away popular Yankee doodles. And instead, we've got all these over there. Rush Hour 3 event on July the 30th, and Watermelon Festival, don't seem to want a necessity for that. And let's see what we got. He'll be here. A Price Waterhouse Cooper's Day service. Anyway, basically, what the thing is, that we can't afford it. That's why we got all these people that are homeless, and that's why that we got, well, we just basically can't even afford to give our city employees a raise, and they had to go without a cost of living increase. It's because the CRA has taken all the money and putting up all these big projects and putting up all the problems like the Grand Avenue project, and I wish Zuma Dog was here because he knows exactly what's going on. Stop building all these mega malls, and then maybe we can afford these events, but otherwise, I would say to the kids, "Sorry, kids, can't afford to do this event anymore because the CRA take your money. Bye."
Miriam Fogler is our last speaker on this one.
I'm okay about private development, but not for the public, and this is part of the problem why we can't afford these fee waivers things, because we're spending so much money handing, giving free handouts for housing, and I have nothing against the poor people, but we can't afford to keep giving freebies to people when they should be working for it. And secondly, that's another reason is Prop R should be placed on the ballot, just like we did it through the initial process, through the city, so that we don't have to worry about these fee waivers. People doing all this loopholes now, you're trying to divide our ballots. I mean, I'm at the agendas to make it harder for the public to see it. Some people have trouble, don't have computers, don't have TVs, some people don't have phones. You know, there's people who need access to this information. You have no right to do that. This is a violation of Brown Act.
This is regarding a fee waiver?
Also, yeah, this is regarding the fee waivers, because if, after all, you're trying to do is if it has been heard in committee, then we won't have a right to speak on it here. You're not going to call it special. Oh, we can just speak on it in committee and not have a right to see it on the agenda here, to be voted on. So, and Prop R especially is going to affect...
Mr. President, I still don't think she's talking about this item.
Yes, I am talking about the item because this is going to reflect on the special fees by extending your term limits, and that should be done through the initial process, not through 15 votes.
Thank you. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Okay. Next up, Ms. Perry, I believe, has left. We're down to nine members, which means that we no longer have a quorum. We have two more items, which those two will be carried over to tomorrow. Items number 52 and item 57, along with number one, which was the Community Development Department. We no longer have a quorum, but are there any business announcements for committees or any council? Seeing none, we will next be in session tomorrow. It's Wednesday, July 25th, here at 10:00 AM in council chambers. Thank you very much.